I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, January the 9th, 2023. I would ask everyone to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Pete Husk from Mount Zion Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Try now.
God's holy word is told us in Jeremiah 33:3 that we are to call unto him; he will answer and show us great mighty things we've never known. Let's pray together. Father, I pray tonight that you instill in us that you're in this place. I pray not only for the leadership of Cheriville, North Carolina, but I pray for the state of North Carolina, God, that you hear us when we pray. And when we pray, God, and call upon you that you answer us by giving us wisdom, you show us your power through the night and through this meeting, that you're seen through what is said and done, and that your wisdom flows. God, I pray for everyone in this room, that you put a hedge of protection around us, that when we seek you, we will find, and that your presence, God, is known, and that we glorify and honor you through it all. God be with this time, be with us in this meeting, and show us your power. And it's in the name of Jesus Christ I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The first item on our agenda tonight will be the approval of the agenda as presented. And we do need to make an amendment to our agenda tonight to include our Chamber of Board of Directors would like to make two appointments tonight. So I would ask the council for a decision on voting on the amended agenda. I have a motion in a second to approve the council vote for the agenda with the amended item as approved. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All against, same. We have none. It is unanimous. Next item is approval of our minutes of city council regular meeting of December the 12th, 2022. What is the council's pleasure on approving or min? I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. It is unanimous. Next item is the mayor's comments. Now, I want to welcome to all in attendance and all those watching via media streaming to tonight's meeting. We have a very special council meeting tonight, so my comments will be very brief because I know many of you will be eagerly awaiting the TV broadcasting of the college football national championship game that will be played later on this evening. Let me begin by acknowledging that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. On behalf of all U.S. citizens, I want to say thank you to all law enforcement officers who putting their lives on the line, not just today, but each and every day, to protect and serve all of us that live in the greatest country in the world, the United States of America. Thanks once again to all law enforcement officers. City manager Dalton has informed me that the federal government grant in the amount of $114,000 has been approved for the city's police department renovations. We are hoping for the new roof and interior work to start within the month. A new lift pump will keep the sewage and water out of the basement area, and that will be put in place during this rehab process. Interviews for our new police chief that started this past week, and we want to thank Gaskin County District Attorney Travis Page for helping our city manager with these interviews. We are anticipating having a chief in place by February of this year. And I want to send a thanks out to our public work guys who have worked extremely hard this past week trying to make up for the holiday time off. They have worked 10-hour shifts to get our sanitation routes on schedule, as well as operating the leaf cut to try to keep the leaf pickup under control. It is with a heavy heart and deep sadness that I report to death of former Mayor Bob Ostel. Bob was our city's mayor for 10 consecutive years. City manager Dalton and I, as well as several of our council members, paid our last respects by attending his funeral yesterday. As a special tribute to Mayor Ostel...
This time, I would like everyone to please stand. As council member John Abernathy will lead us in a special prayer for the Ostel family.
In our hearts in prayer. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we gather with heavy hearts in the passing of our dear friend and former mayor Bob Ostel. But Father, we do not grieve his passing tonight because we know where our brother is. We know that because of the life he led, because of his faith and his love for your son, Jesus, that he is with you in heaven at this moment, and for that, we praise you and we thank you. Right now, Father, I lift his family up to you. I pray that you would give them comfort and peace in the coming days as only you can. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. The next item on our agenda, we will combine item seven and eight, and that is special recognition of Senator Ted Alexander and also special recognition of Superior Court Judge Justin Davis. At this time, I am so happy and privileged and honored to announce that Senator Ted Alexander is going to have his swearing-in here at our council meeting tonight. That is a big plus for our city. So at this time, I will turn it over to Judge Davis, and if the family members would like to come forward. And again, I would like everyone to please stand for the swearing-in.
Thank you, Mayor. It is such an honor to be here, and it is one of the honors of being a part of the judiciary to be able to administer oaths, and it is an honor to be here to administer the oath for my dear friend, Senator Ted Alexander. Senator Alexander, are you prepared to take the oath for Senator for the state of North Carolina?
I am.
If you would place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, and repeat after me, sir. I, Ted Alexander...
I, Ted Alexander.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
I, Ted Alexander...
I, Ted Alexander.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear...
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will bear faithful...
That I will bear faithful.
And true allegiance...
And true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina...
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers...
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities...
And authorities.
Which are...
Which are.
Or may be established...
Or may be established.
For the government thereof...
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor...
And that I will endeavor.
To support...
To support.
Maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina...
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with...
Not inconsistent with...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And finally, I, Ted Alexander...
I, Ted Alexander.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear...
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Senate...
As a member of the Senate.
Of the 2023 General Assembly...
Of the 2023 General Assembly.
Of the state of North Carolina...
Of the state of North Carolina.
To the best of my knowledge and ability...
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Senator Alexander, you now have the floor. You may be seated.
All right. Yes, sir. I'll sign that right now.
We certainly do want to make it legal.
Business first.
Thank you, Justin, Judge Justin Davis, and all of you for being here this evening. I asked if I could say just a few words, and I will try to keep it brief, but I really appreciate our newly-minted Superior Court Judge and his willingness to do this. And of course, I'll acknowledge several folks in just a minute. I want to thank the mayor and council for allowing me to kind of interlopend into your meeting here today. It is truly a privilege and honor for you to allow me to do this, and I am very grateful for that. And I will also want to thank my wife Patty and my daughter Christina who are here this evening. My son Will could not be here. He had to work, but I wanted to acknowledge them and certainly all that they do to support me. It is truly just a wonderful thing because Patty and Christina and Will are always right there for me. And then, if you've ever witnessed our Lieutenant Governor, he always gives his Lord and Savior Jesus Christ credit, so I will do that as well.
Amen.
Him tonight. I know that there are a number of elected officials here tonight and party officials, and this is a really scary thing. I guess I can try to do that. Aside from the principal group up here, I would like to, I'll try to catch everybody, and if I don't, I'm sorry. I see Commissioner from Cleveland County, Ronnie Westine, his wife Susan, thank you for being here. Our chairman of the Republican Men in Cleveland County, Paul Ledford. Who else? Senator Brad O'Kash could not be here this evening, but his wife Jennifer and his first girlfriend, Derek Yocum, are here this evening. Our Chair of Gaskin County, Chad Hawkins, is here, and his wife Patty, thank you for being here. The Chairman of the Republican Men's Club from Lincoln County, David Richardson, is here, and I appreciate that very much. And our President of the Men's from Cleveland County, Republican Chair Yocum, is here. And School Board Member Fred Jarrett from Lincoln County is here, his wife June. And I know I probably missed somebody else aside from our judge here, but who else? Anybody else that I missed, but thank you and all the others. This is very important that you're here, and I want to thank you very much. Now, some people ask me, why did I have it here at, you know, the city council meeting? Some people have done things where they had big events and had lots of food and stuff like that, and somebody told me, well, you just didn't want to have to pay for all the food. I know, and thank you very much, but I have about three days of parade candy out of my pocket. I want to also acknowledge, they're not here tonight, but I want to acknowledge those members of the General Assembly that I work with specifically within my district, 44, which is Cleveland, Lincoln, and now Cheriville and Gaskin County. The Honorable Speaker Tim Moore, Representative Kelly Hastings, who represents Cleveland and Gaskin County, Donnie Loftus, Representative from Gaskin County, John Torbit from Gaskin County, Representative Jason Singh from Lincoln County, and then, as I mentioned earlier, Senator Brad O'Kash, who's been newly sworn in for the remainder of Gaskin County. That is an all-star lineup, I would tell you, and it is truly a privilege, and it is a great thing to be able to work with each and every one of those folks. Also, I will give credit to our Congresswoman, Patrick Henry, and I appreciate the work that he does and working with them. I will also add, as mayor, as you so vehemently said, my condolences to the city of Cheriville for Mayor Ostel's passing. He served as mayor while I was mayor of Shelby, and so I got to know him during that time. And I know that he did some wonderful things with the city of Cheriville. Real briefly, I was sworn in just a minute ago, and I put my hand on the Bible. And I did it wrong in Lincoln County last year, or two years ago. Maybe I wasn't... But I swore to uphold the Constitution. And you have a copy of the Constitution of North Carolina in your seat, and Patty was holding a copy of the Constitution and with the Bible as I was sworn in. You know, you hear a lot about the United States Constitution, but you don't hear too much about the North Carolina Constitution because we live, you know, we live, our news and everything just sort of focuses in on the federal Constitution. But it's very important because we live in a federal type government, with states being a sovereign state banded together, going to be these united states. And some of y'all may not know, but in the North Carolina Constitution, we had three constitutions in North Carolina. First was in 1776, the second was in 1868, and then more recently in 1971. And what you have in front of you is the version from 1971. After 1868, they had like 70 amendments that were passed, all, you know, for that Constitution. So after a century, just about a century, most of those were between 1933 and 1968. And with that many constitutional amendments, many wondered if a new constitution was in order. And so after they had a, there was a commission report, and they made their recommendations, and the General Assembly voted, and then the public voted, they had a general election to adopt a third Constitution in 1971. All three have a reminder that we need to heed, and that is a frequent recurrence to fundamental principles is absolutely necessary to preserve the blessings delivered. All three of them have that phrase. And also, what a lot of people don't think about and don't understand is our preamble to our Constitution. And I'm just going to read the first, it's a little, I'm going to read the first paragraph of the preamble of our Constitution. Now, this is 1971, not that far from, you know, not that far back. "We, the people of the state of North Carolina, grateful to Almighty God, the sovereign ruler of nation, for the preservation of the American Union and the existence of our civil, political, and religious liberties, and acknowledging our dependence upon Him, the continuance of those blessings to us and our posterity, do for the more certain security thereof and for the better government of this state ordained and established this Constitution." A lot of people don't understand, the first thing in our Constitution as a preamble is our dependence upon God Almighty. And in, when I took the oath, the Bible was opened to Ephesians 4:1. And I actually heard this in the sermon yesterday at our church. And the verse is, "Therefore, the prisoner of the Lord beseech you that ye walk worthy of the votation," or calling, it's a translation, "the votation or calling to which we are called." Serving in the North Carolina Senate in any position, and no matter what you do in your life, that is a calling. And so we all need to work as if we are worthy of that calling. And so my pledge to you and to all of us present and listening in, and everybody in my district, is that's what I want to do. I want to walk in a manner that is worthy of the calling of the office of which I have been called. And so I want to again thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, and to, I hope that you know that I look at my district and counties and folks that I serve, I often give them the example of that I feel like I can, as a little bit, because I love them all, and I like to look at them. So Cheriville is my little bit, as is all the other places that I represent. But thank you again, Mayor and Judge Davis, and of course, my wife Patty and his family. But thank you all for this honor to allow me to be sworn in before you this evening. And I know that other people need to move on and do some other things afterwards, but thank you again.
At this time, we're going to excuse anyone that, before we get into the business session of our council meeting tonight, anyone that would like to leave at this time, just be sure you call and give us a halftime score.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Patty, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Senator Ted, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for...
Glad to have you on.
You keep him straight now. Keep him straight.
I grew up busy, wonderful.
Okay. Hey, buddy.
Well, I think, you know, Freywee County Commissioner Matt, the others are on the state list, Donnie Loftus and Torbit.
Thank you.
But they sort of with him.
Can I clear them out? That's...
Oh, Marcella. Don't get in her, Democrat. Thanks again, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to the item number nine, which is the presentation of the end-of-year report for Chamber of Commerce and our Chamber President, Chairman, excuse me. Are you Chairman or President, or both? Okay. I thought that was a singing group. Okay, well, we've got Pete Kraft here who will lead us through that, and we do have a handout for all the council members from the chamber. So go ahead, Pete, you've got the floor.
Well, the crowd's thinned out a little bit, so won't have any trouble out nobody with Marcella. You know what I think about you. On behalf of our Cheriville Chamber of Commerce, it's already been said here tonight a couple of times, but I do want to say in this public meeting, from our board and from our chamber, our deepest sympathy to the family of Mayor Bob Ostel and his friendship to us and to our city and for being a servant to this city. And our prayers are certainly with his family during this time. And I'm appreciative on behalf of the chamber for Senator Alexander being here and choosing Cheriville to take his oath of office, and that means a great deal. On behalf of the chamber, I hope you, as Board of Directors, Chairman, now for 10 years on this chamber board, and we're going to give you a highlight of the year in review for 2022, and we'll make this as brief as possible. During the year, we had seven ribbon cuttings that we attended and had part in. Three of these were actually expansions, I guess you could say three of them, expansions of existing businesses, which is what a city likes to see and what a chamber likes to see because it means growth. So we were happy to see that. We had Turner Animal Clinic, Frank Zis Photography, the new Cheriville YMCA building, Hometown Healthy, Main Street Family Urgent Care, Caramont Urgent Care, and Piedmont Lethem Foundation Office. Also assisted with a dedication ceremony for the newly revitalized Bell Office and Apartment Building, which you all have seen and is certainly a very nice place after it has been revitalized along with our entire Main Street. Assisted with Business After Hours held at Peak Resources here in Cheriville. And if any of you haven't been to one of those, it's well worth your time to go to one. They really put on a nice time for the folks that come by, different businesses from town and throughout the county and neighboring counties as well. And it's a very nice time when we go down there for Business After Hours. In our community relations, we hosted a joint movie night with Cheriville YMCA and our Main Street Family Care, assisted with Somerset Community Meet and Greet, provided community marketing materials such as our restaurant guides, shopping guides, and other items. Our school partnerships took some Halloween characters over to the schools, the elementary school, intermediate school, and the middle school, and also the Grinch and Santa Claus made a visit to the elementary, intermediate, and middle schools. Also helped find sponsorships for area schools and other things, such as athlete sponsorships to ensure each athlete has the proper equipment needed, student of the month programs, and assisted with teacher Christmas gift baskets. Our festivals and our festival committee assisted with the planning and execution of the following events, our Independence Day celebration, the Hocus Pocus Parade or the Halloween Parade, the Monsters March, and I think there was around 400 children was in that little parade that day before Halloween, our Scaryville, the tree lighting, Pooville, which a large crowd was in attendance for as well, and our Christmas parade. And on the next couple items, if our numbers are correct, our sponsorships total in 2022, Volunteer hours for board members and just people in general that helped with these events, 488 volunteer hours were put in. We helped gain sponsors to help pay for $9,500 of the city's fireworks display for the Independence Day celebration, and we did not use any of the city's budgeted money for any of the Halloween events or Christmas events. We were able to raise enough sponsors where it was not needed. Now, this is the second year, last year, this was also the case, and last year, we were able to help in $3,000 of sponsorship for fireworks programs. So two years in a row, we've been able to assist in a great way for the city, and I think it goes a long way with teamwork. I've said that every time I've come to a council meeting, that the teamwork with the mayor, with city council, with others, without that teamwork, it's not going to make it. Without communication, things are not going to happen. But we're blessed to have that mayor with you and the council. We've always had a good working relationship and a good team support there. That's just like a ball team. Without all the team players, they're not going to win. And the chamber's been successful, and I think... And on the next couple items, if our numbers are correct, our sponsorships total in 2022, Volunteer hours for board members and just people in general that helped with these events, 488 volunteer hours were put in. We helped gain sponsors to help pay for $9,500 of the city's fireworks display for the Independence Day Celebration, and we did not use any of the city's budgeted money for any of the Halloween events or Christmas events. We were able to raise enough sponsors where it was not needed. Now, this is the second year, last year, this was also the case, and last year we were able to help in $3,000 of sponsorship for fireworks programs. So two years in a row, we've been able to assist in a great way for the city, and I think it goes a long way with teamwork. I've said that every time I've come to a council meeting, that the teamwork with the mayor, with city council, with others, without that teamwork, it's not gonna make it. Without communication, things are not gonna happen. But we're blessed to have that mayor with you and council. We've always had a good working relationship and a good team support there. That's just like a ball team. Without all the team players, they're not gonna win. And the chamber's been successful, and I think we can also say that the city has been successful as well. So that is our 2022 year in review. It gives me great honor to represent our city wherever I may go, to represent Cherryville. It makes my heart glad. And to serve as this chairman of this board now for 10 years has been a great privilege for me. The last item of business that we will need action from council on is the appointment of two nominees for Chamber Board Directors, and these are for three-year terms. And the nominees are myself, Pete Kraft, and Emily Hurst. Emily, this will be for her second term, and she is employed with Fleetnet, a representation from there. And then, of course, if approved, this will be my fifth term on this chamber board.
Okay. I just had a couple questions before we present that to council as far as the nominees. Are you still planning, will you have the annual banquet in February that we normally?
I think it has been moved up to, was it May? May, I believe it is.
Oh, okay.
That's in the process now of getting put together. We will have our regular board meeting at the end of this month, and I'm sure as this new year has started, that'll be one of the first items of conversation. It's when that time will be, and that will be brought up during then. As soon as we know that, we'll pass that information on to you.
And the second question was, on our Independence Day Celebration, are we gonna try to go back to Ludusso Stadium for that?
I think that has been some discussion.
Oh, okay. That's great, because I think that was very successful.
And I've heard a lot of positive comments about that, especially people with children, you know, that they know they're contained in that stadium and, you know, it's being looked at.
Okay.
I do believe that will take.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I wanted to get that, those questions in before, because I didn't know whether you were gonna go back on or not, so.
As long as they don't have it, may I say.
Okay, all right. So we have two nominees, two for terms, three-year terms for our Chamber of Commerce, and they are Pete Kraft and Emily Hurst. Do I have any discussion on the nominees? If not, do I have council to make a decision on appointing these two individuals?
Make a motion, we accept both these nominees, move forward with vote. Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second to accept nominee Pete Kraft and nominee Emily Hurst for terms of three years on the Chamber of Commerce beginning in 2023. So that'll run through 2025, okay? Any other discussion by council? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to council for your trust in those that serve this board and for myself.
Thank you. Thank you, did a great job.
Proud to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, we'll move to item 10, is the presentation of the audit year ending June 30, 2022. And our auditor Sheila Thornton is with us tonight, and she'll lead us through that, and everyone has their handout. So you have the floor now. Sheila?
All right. This is Butler's third year doing the audit for the city, and we appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit services for you all. Thank you for that opportunity. We began the audit in September this year, worked through September and October. We were able to issue the report in November and the LGC approved in December. So we have issued an unqualified opinion, which means that's a clean opinion, and that is what you want every year. That means the city has met the audit requirements of the North Carolina General Statutes and the Financial State Representative Financial Stats of the City at June 30, 2022. The report's 85 pages, so I will not go through all of that tonight. I took a couple highlights I wanted to point out. It was actually a really good year for the city. There's a net increase in your net position for the year of $2,442,392. And just so you know, the general fund increase was $1,743,445, and the Water and Silver Fund increase for the year was $698,947. So a good strong year for the city. We did have to do a single audit this year for some of the ARCA funds that came in. They were around $967,000, that was received. So if you spend more than $750,000, you have to have a single audit, so that's what we did. We did not find any issues with any of the testing that we did. All the documentation was there, everything was in good order. The unassigned fund balance is something that you guys usually like to hear about, and that number for the general fund was $1,220,861. And that represents funds that are available to the council without any restriction at all. And that's an increase of $140,240 from the prior year. So very good year. Dixie does a really good job. She has everything in order, her staff, they do a great job. So we were able to get everything that we needed when we were here. So again, Butler, so we'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to perform the audit. Hope to work with you guys again for a few years. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any specifics about the statements, if you've had a chance to look over.
Does any council member have any questions for Ms. Thornton? Staff?
Nothing but to say thank you.
No, thank you. You're very thorough. I see y'all up there working all the time, and Robert, if it's not you, it's Robert, or sometimes it's both of you, and sometimes it's three of you that are in the conference room.
We'll do a single audit one more year because of the ARCA fund. So for June 30, 23, it'll be another single audit as required.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you. And especially Dixie, you make it easy for them. We really do appreciate you. You do. You do a great job, and we see it by the report she gives us, and she says anytime they want something available, you just ready to give it to them. So thank you for all you do. And also City Manager Dalton does a good job working on our finances. Okay, we'll move on to item 11, is citizens to be heard. Any citizen that would like to speak at this time may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address before you speak, and comments will be strictly held to five minutes per person. So at this time, do I have any citizen that would like to be heard? Okay, if not, we'll move on. And that would be item number 12, is consideration of public hearing. This is in regards to a proposed text amendment for the consideration of permitting food trucks to the zoning ordinance, and our planning and zoning director, Alec Blackburn, will lead us through that, and I would need a vote from council to enter into public hearing at this time.
Make a motion to enter into public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to enter into public hearing. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the same, there is none. Okay, Alex. Alec. Dad gummit.
Pretty much between August and November of last year, at least once a week, I was getting a phone call about potentially opening up a food truck in Cherryville. As it currently reads, our ordinance will allow me to $25, my office only permit for Christmas tree sales, special events, rodeos, circuses, 4-H carnivals, and everything else. So majority of those I could have, I could approve multiple food trucks, but I could not approve a single food truck in and of itself without going through a special use procedure in three months. I spoke to City Manager Ryan Dalton, and we started reaching out to other municipalities in our area, seeing what they do as far as food trucks, what their regulations, what they like about their own regulations, what they don't like about their own regulations. I spoke with the city of Dallas and their planning director, he really liked theirs. They don't use it much, but it is something they have in their back pocket to use. This is pretty much just to kind of streamline the process for a food truck. Nothing too fancy, they will be self-contained, they don't have written permission from the owner of the property of which they seek to use. We're proposing a six-year-long, or let's see, I believe it's four-year-long permits that will be a permit fee that y'all scheduled tonight, a separate motion. Right now, we're proposing a $400 permit. Now, at any point in time that that permit holder is evicted from that property by the property owner, that permit becomes null and void. So that would kind of spur on them keeping their project clean and appeasing the property owner, not running them up, as you would say. They will also provide for four single event permits to be, you know, if there's a special event going on, say a parade or something like that, they can come to my office, get a permit, and that will also be set by y'all in a separate motion to add to the fee schedule. So that they can have a single day. Now, they can only operate an hour before the event and an hour after the event. Now, if we're having a parade or we're having our own festival, at that point in time, this ordinance will allow the police chief to say, you're in an area that we've designated for this, would you please move it? The likelihood of that happening slim to none, but we do have that capability to do so at any fee. And so they will also have to provide current health inspections from Gaston County or from their home county, at which time, when they supply it to me, I can contact Gaston County Health Department, they'll run the certificates and say, yeah, they're good or, you know, don't worry about it, don't mess with those.
This is basically just adding something in that we don't have currently, right?
Yes, sir.
So that we do have some.
As it currently reads, it would be a use that's less than 45 days or shorter. It has to have a special use process before the planning board and then before y'all for approval. We're just trying to streamline that to have some options.
You know, I'd asked you that same question, that if a recommendation is not made during that 40-day period, then the application would be forwarded to the city council?
For a special, for a special.
Yeah, without a recommendation.
Yes, sir, and that would be the next agenda item would be the text amendments for that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do I have any citizen that would like to speak in public hearing at this time? The floor is open. Okay, if not, do I would entertain a motion to exit public hearing at this time?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to exit public hearing at this time? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, do I have any discussion by council? Or a direction to vote to adopt this text amendment?
I'll make a motion to adopt this text amendment for permitting food trucks to the zoning ordinance as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the text amendment for the consideration of permitting food trucks to the zoning ordinance. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, next item, item 13. Oh, yeah, you want to set the fee?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So what we proposed and what the majority of the municipalities around us do is a $400 year-long, $400 a year-long permit. We have this key temporary permit as it usually is $25 for the single bed.
Okay.
And I forgot to reiterate that if you're having a graduation or a special event at your own private residence on residential property, you don't need a permit.
You're exempt from that.
We do suggest you let us know, that way you know food officers, fire department, emergency services, if they're aware of it, so if they get a call, crazy's gonna happen. And for the HOAs that are coming, if the HOA wants to sponsor one on their own property, this would be a permit from the city.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion now to adopt this text amendment with the fees that were presented by our planning and zoning director, Alec Blackburn?
I'll make a motion to accept the text amendment, the fees as presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second to accept the fees as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Now, we will move to item 13, and this is consideration of a public hearing in regards to zoning text amendment for clarification of the special use process. And again, we have our planning and zoning director, Alec Blackburn, who will lead us through this. I would entertain a motion to enter into public hearing.
Make a motion to enter into public hearing.
Have a motion to enter into public hearing. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, Alec, you've got the floor again, and that's on pages 42 through 44.
Thank you, Mayor, and actually, as you see on that first page there, there's the four things that I could approve in my office that kind of goes until now for food trucks that I could do multiple. And so back when the city of Cherryville signed on to Central Orange Council governments to revamp our ordinances to make them 160 decent fine, we got them back, and you'll notice halfway through section seven, it changes from city council to board of adjustment. So that leaves a lot of gray area where, which way do we do it? This is just to clarify that. We did take it away from the last half of the section of the ordinance from saying the board of adjustment had the sole discretion in quasi-judicial legislation to do this, and it's changing it so that the planning board will then make a recommendation to the city council for y'all's ultimate decision. Now, we'll still have to maintain the quasi-judicial hearings and swearing in and testimonies. However, it would be y'all's discretion to approve or deny a special use permit. It'll go almost similar to a rezoning, but in a quasi-judicial manner. I went through the ordinance, I made the correct changes, adjustments, deletions, and strike-throughs, and it would be, like I said, just pretty much the half step down from a superior court judge, but it would be in front of y'all, and y'all will have that power. It went before the board or the planning board and board of adjustment for their recommendation. It passed with only one person voting against it. Their response was that they felt that it was taking too much power away from the board of adjustment, but they weren't upset about it. They just felt like they were getting stripped of some power.
Okay, do I have any citizen that would like to speak now in public hearing regarding this matter? Everybody's quiet tonight, okay? All right, if not, do I have a direction from council to exit public hearing at this time?
Make a motion to exit public hearing.
Okay, have a motion in a second to exit public hearing at this time? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, do I have any questions from council in regards to the text amendment for clarification of the special use permit?
I don't have a question, but I think I gotta state that I think the council ought to have final say, so.
I think that's basically what this is gonna do. It's gonna strike out the board of adjustments and.
So last, last special use permit for Dick Beam Road.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Okay, yeah, I think it covers that.
I know it does, I'm just saying, I think.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, that you think you do approve as presented, and certainly it will be council's decision if we do vote to adopt the text amendment. So at this time, do I have direction or I have a vote to adopt this text amendment?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the text amendment as presented. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, we'll move to item 14, is the presentation of financial statement and our city. And our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that. Uh, I don't know if everybody printed one out, uh, it's, it's.
Last page.
There we go.
Mayor, council, uh, I just want to point out mostly that the finances are going just as we have been saying for months. If you go back to the last financial report that we got, that last month's financial report, the general fund, for example, is down $567,000 ending October 31st. The financial report that you have in front of you now is ending November the 30th and that, uh, shows that the general fund is only down $131,000, which is a $436,000 increase obviously. So at the end of December, we fully expect that's when, like we've been saying, December, January is when the general fund is gonna make its, make its jump, uh, and get to where we wanted to be and carry us into the end of the year. And that's what enables us to have the budget and, uh, the audit that we just heard and keeps our fund balance growing year to year. Uh, if you see there, uh, you've got your total bank balances on your report. Uh, the bank balance has gone up, uh, I think, yeah, it's gone up about $200,000 from last month to this month, the total bank balance. If you look at last month's financial report compared to this. And that, that encompasses all of our funds, our general fund, electric fund, water and sewer fund, everything. Uh, there again, we still have not made those transfers yet. That probably will be coming soon, we will, February, February, we'll make the transfers from some of our cash accounts where we'll make the transfers back into our water and sewer fund where we have paid mostly for the oxidation ditch, the generator that we got up and running not long ago at the West Water Plant. And that will turn the water and sewer fund back up. So I would say that we're going exactly the pace we need to go and compare it to last year because it's the same type of audit.
Is that, uh, on our power bill money? Uh, have, we've received both of, we've received both?
We received the final in December 28th.
Okay.
It'll show next month. Does that snowdew return?
My goodness. Just, we just, just not enough money to do the roads that we want to do. And I, that's.
That's a, that's a reality there. The power bill does not bring in near enough funds to, to really do the, the maintenance that needs to be done on the roads.
Okay, and so, uh, our, uh, property tax money's coming in at the rate we want it to.
I just paid mine. That's what I'm saying.
That's why it jumped.
I just mailed mine, dude.
Okay.
And that's typical, see, like December is the month.
Mm-hmm. They don't want to pay the, uh, interest or the penalty.
I'll wait till the last minute. That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
Paid down on the field.
Does any council member have any questions for our city manager regarding, or our finance director, uh, regarding our financial report at this time?
I'd just like to say that last month I made some comments about the electric fund and electric rate and told you, you know, one-on-one, that I think what bothered me was that you characterized it as profit. Tonight she characterized it as net. I told you maybe surplus would be a better word. And I know we need that, that money for the things that are coming up, so, uh.
Especially with the housing crisis.
And that's what the city system is doing, buying the new transformers and equipment. We need to bring more customers on to the system, which is, and if you've ever kept up with Electric City and what we've been told for the last probably 20 years, there's only one way to solve this problem, because we're everywhere out of problems. So the more people we bring on to our system, the better we're all in.
Right.
Okay. Uh, we can move on now to item 15 is other business. Uh, the one item I have under other business was, uh, I've had report that, uh, there's some speeding, uh, on Acre Circle. And I think the speed limit down there's 35, but he says they're flying through there. But you've got two curves. You've got one, and after you turn, you've got that first curve and then you've got another one going out. So I was just saying, maybe we could, uh, give direction to our police department, maybe just to study it, maybe even put one of those speed limit signs, uh, the flashing signs and just monitor how it is going through there. Uh, actually, the individual, uh, was wanting us to drop the speed limit, but I'm not sure that's gonna make a big impact down there. If you drop down to 25, somebody can get hurt just as bad at 25 as, as they can at 35. So I'd rather like for us to study it first and see just how bad the situation is down there. It may be something we just might just want to put up, uh, watch for children sign or something instead of dropping the speed limit. I'm not sure. Ms. Rollin?
May I say something?
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about Acre Circle. You need to be uptown at 5, about 5:15. Well, I pick up Mary Patterson from Dr. White's office and I go early and I just sit and watch. That's a speed zone going downtown since they don't pave the road, the people are speeding. It's 55 going down, but I see a man driving a car at, uh, in front of a home folks. I was sitting there going, where are the popo at?
Wow. What is it, uh, 10 or 15 through?
It's 30.
25. 25.
No, it's slower than 25.
I think it's 15.
20, yeah, it's 20. 20 through Main Street.
But if you're standing up there, 20 looks like a fly.
We, we've addressed this before and we've got several reasons why it appears that they're in the, we, we put up the, in Dunn Traffic Study and it's not really that bad, but.
It's kind of an optical illusion.
It's an optical illusion because the buildings are so close and when you squeeze them in, it makes it look like they're going faster. But if you'll just do it yourself, put your, put your car on 25 and go through there, it seems like you're going faster. Yeah, I don't either. Okay. But, uh, uh, Officer Doolittle, you'll, you'll check on that for us, won't you?
We'll get on that. You, you're talking about at Delview and that.
Right, Delview, the first, after you pass the big curve, the first road back to the left. And then it just circles around, comes back out on, uh, Delview Road.
We'll sit there at Delview more many, many times and they run the radar over there. So we'll try to get a sign up there for the next couple of days.
Okay. And actually, I, I talked to another individual that Lils on that road, uh, Forward Wright, and he says there, he don't know of any children on that road, so I don't, I don't know.
There shouldn't be any traffic on that road really, unless you live there. You know?
But anyway, we'll, we'll check that out. Do I have any other business from council at this time?
I had a lady make a comment yesterday. She was in front of my building and I have a nativity scene in the window. And she was complimenting me on it and she said, why's the city not have a nativity scene? I know we've got a lot of new decorations, David. Is there any?
Well, I may answer that to a certain degree.
Okay.
We, we do have Joey out there in the lot beside, uh, McGinnis Furniture.
Yeah.
But they did a nativity scene in Dallas.
Yeah.
And it brought in the atheists and from Wisconsin, from Illinois and everywhere because it was on city property. So all they did, they had to take the nativity scene out and just moved it across the road there at the funeral home in Dallas.
I went through Dallas this year. They have one in front of a church. If you go on down, there's one in the courtyard as well.
But it's not on, uh, city property. It's on private.
Old courthouse?
Yes, but they, they don't have a nativity scene there.
I thought there was one.
No, no, they, they, uh, I was, went down there when they had all the TV vans and stuff coming in. They had all those atheists from, I think it was Wisconsin. And, uh, I, I know they told us. Be careful where you put religious scenes on, uh, city property.
I just wish we could put that right there. Remember the.
But I tell you where they would be a great place is, is right there at McGinnis Furniture. We could put one there because Matthew Deligar owns that land. And it would be in, in town, but it, it wouldn't be on city property.
Right.
And, uh.
Someone wants to.
Right.
So we can't just want to put it there, but someone private could.
Right, if it's on private property. Okay, anything else from council? Other business?
One thing from staff. I will let y'all know that, you know, that, uh, the county passed before the reevaluation this year. And Dixie and I are scheduled to go meet with the young this Wednesday to see, I guess, some of the preliminary results as far as what the assessed value of real estate is gonna be now. Hopefully we'll have some answers Wednesday.
You don't have any guess percentage wise about how much they're going up? 10, 20?
I've heard a lot of rumors. I think that is very low, 10 or 20.
We'll see, wait till next year.
I think it's gonna be a lot higher.
But if we think back to what, uh, Alan Frayley told us, that if they go up a lot, they may cut the rate so that we're still paying about the same thing. So that's kind of what the county's shooting for, so that's kind of, looks good for us.
Decision for us is we may not know what the county commissioners are gonna do with the county tax rate before we make our decision.
But you know, uh, I just don't go along, I don't think that's a washout, what they're saying. If they count their rate, it's gonna offset what the county's going up. Uh, maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, it, I think it's just, uh, maybe a tactic to put us in the dark on some of it, but.
You're right.
Could be.
They might make a little cut.
Could be.
Maybe think all of it.
Overall, I don't think, I think it will be an increase, I really do.
Hopefully we'll make some answers somewhere.
Yeah, okay, that'll be good.
Yeah, 'cause why would you do a revaluation if you're not gonna increase a little bit, right? What's the purpose of it, so? We'll see.
Okay. Anything else from staff? If not, uh, do I have a motion from council for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in two seconds to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned and we're gonna get to see the ballgame.